Really.
All right, we will call our meeting of December 23 to order, the Order of Commissioners, and I'm going to take a departure from what is our normal observance of silence for a moment, and I just want to ask if everyone would consider the repose of the soul of Frank J. Dixon. He was a friend to all Lebanon Countyans, he was a giant among us, and he passed about a week ago, actually exactly a week ago today. And also, please remember all those dealing with COVID and flu and other challenges of this time, at this time of year, especially for our partner here, Commissioner Ames. Thank you. We can now observe that moment of silence. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business is public comment, and we have some special guests with us this morning. We have Colonel Lane Marshall, Commander at Fort Indian Town Gap, and a person known well to all of us who haven't seen for a long time, but we're glad he's back for a Christmas visit, is David Weisner from the Gap as well. So if you guys would like to just proceed and give us your report.
Good morning to everybody. Thanks for inviting me here today. I know that Dave here and Mr. McCord and folks come down to my stead quite a bit, and I apologize, and unfortunately, I've seen all of you many times at different places on the Gap, but unfortunately, I haven't had the opportunity to get myself down there personally. You know, it's a, it's a rough and tumble life that we live over there running the garrison, so, but Mr. Weisner here, or Dave as I call him, is certainly a very learned student of running installations, he knows more tip of the spinger than I'll ever know, and I've been in the job now for four years, so he's represented as well, and he will continue to do so as well, will Mr. McCord, as Dave can't make it. But I wanted to come down here first and foremost, before I give you these, all of these things that are happening on the Gap right now, I just wanted to thank you guys for the support that you've provided, the installation in my, my command over the last four years. I retire the end of February, and so I'll be stepping down as the commander as of the 1st of January. Lieutenant Colonel Andy O'Connor, who's currently my operations officer, will be taking over as the garrison commander, at least in an acting status right now, until he's confirmed later, I guess probably sometime next year as the garrison commander. So Andy's worked for me multiple times, and he's worked for the garrison now for almost three years, so very, very knowledgeable about the installation and what we have going on, so he'll be of all the people to take over, especially with, like I said, we call him the old gray beard. The old gray beard sitting beside him, you know, the Gap's in good hands, so I feel very, very happy about that. Don't really want to leave, but you know, after thirty, almost thirty-six years, it's time for me to go do something else, so, but it has been an honor to serve there as the commander, and I really, truly mean this, it's an honor, and we appreciate what, how the county supports us, come out to our events, you support us, not only when we have troubles there on the Gap, or we have noise complaint, or whatever else the case may be, you guys are always there to support us, and that is, is instrumental in today's world, especially for an installation like ours, which, you know, it's, it's big, but it's not that big, yet we still have been fortunate enough to continue to be the busiest National Guard turning installation in the nation, where I guess this is the fifth year in a row. Fifth year in a row, so, and we're very proud of that. But that wouldn't happen if we didn't have the support from not only Lebanon County, but the other three counties that we, and township that we, that surround us. But you know, we, we call it our little slice of central Pennsylvania heaven, it really is, and a lot of folks from the Army, from all components, the Marines, the Air Force, the Navy, that come there, have no idea what the Gap is until they get there, and they're like, I can't believe this place exists, because I can tell you, I've been all over the world, and a bunch of other countries, and, and trained in pretty much, pretty much everything on the East Coast, a lot of things out West that nothing compares, even though we're not as big, the customer service, and then the people, the people that are around the Gap mean a lot to it, and I mean, you know, let's face it, you can't swing a, throw a rock without hitting ten people from Lebanon County that work on the installation, so, you know, with a workforce of over two thousand on a daily basis, and then we swell to ten, fifteen, twenty thousand on the weekends, it depends on, you know, the time of the year, it's important that we have the relationship with the county, so I thank you for that, and I thank you for your support. In regards to all things that are happening on the Gap, there's a lot happening, the, the much discussed and much publicized gates have actually started, so I can say with a hundred percent accuracy at this point, that they've actually turned some dirt, and they're putting in the bastions and some other things they need for irrigation to start the actual earthwork and the things. Obviously, we're getting close to the wintertime, even though it doesn't feel like it, I guess it won't feel like it by Christmas Day, it's gonna be like almost sixty degrees, but, but they will start the work here, the actual earthwork, probably over the next two or three weeks, you know, after the holidays, and then that project will go through at least the end of 2022. I would argue that, based on the construction timeline, and it depends how these things go, we, you guys all familiar with, with construction these days, probably end of 2022, early 2023, before the west gate, which is the main gate, that's a 24/7 gate, which is the closest to Funks, I use that as a landmark, because some people, you know, don't get east and west where the gas is concerned, but the one closest to Funks will be the main gate, 24/7 gate, it'll be the one with the visitor center, and that one will be, will be completed arguably, probably first. The east gate, we're in the process of, of working on the fundage, or the funds and things to complete that gate, but it will also begin construction sometime probably midsummer, and it's a smaller gate, it will not be the 24/7 gate, it'll be an additional gate that will only be during certain duty hours or, or special events, but that gate will also begin in early 2022, and because it is not quite as much, it's not as complex of a project, it's quite possible that it would be completed by the end of 2022 or early 2023. So I would say that where we stand today, that the gates and the fencing that are gonna go around Fort Indian Town Gap will be arguably, it'll be early 2023, and they will be up, and we will be fully operational, you know, as a, as a controlled access installation, just like Carlisle Barracks or anywhere else that you've been. You know, we get questions all the time, what does that mean, you know, I've, I've got an account with the credit union, how, how do I come into part payment? It's no different than if you were going to Carlisle Barracks to go and do whatever business you were doing on Carlisle Barracks. You would come, you would show your driver's license, they'd run you through a system, as long as you, you know, I'm not one in twelve states for something that you did twenty years ago, I'm joking, but as long as you don't have anything, you know, on your record or anything else that'll give you a visitor's pass, and, you know, telling where you're gonna go, is no different than if you were at any other military installation in the nation today, so, but, so that's pretty much the long and short of where the gates can, are going. We also started construction on our new emergency services building, I guess it was about a month and a half ago, so the first phase of that will be a new police station for the Fig Police Department, that'll be completed sometime late summer, early fall of 2022, right?
Yes.
Of 2022, and then later in 2022, early 2023, hopefully will begin, at least that's the timeline now, will be construct, will begin construction on the fire department. So that'll be the emergency services side of the post, if you will, all emergency services will be consolidated right there. If you knew where the C-130 or the big airplane used to sit, that's where those emergency buildings.
It's still there this past week.
Well, okay, but it's actually not where it used to be, that's what you just, a lot of people don't realize that, so we, we actually moved it.
Oh.
Down the road, so, but where, where it used to be, right across, they're like, right there where the other 20th Division Memorial is, and all that memory, it'd be right across the street, we moved it down the road, so the emergency services annex will be there. And like I said, the, the police department will be finished sometime late summer, early fall, and then the fire department sometime, probably begin construction in late fall, and probably 2023 before it's completed. Also, the Youth Challenge Academy, which is, you know, one of the governor's initiatives that will begin, it's, actually its first class will come in in late July, early August, that's, I think it's between the fifty and a hundred kids.
Fifty and a hundred.
Fifty and a hundred will, will be the first, didn't roll easy, if you will, there, and so we're excited about that, and a lot of construction's going on for that as well right now. So, let's see, that's the fire emergency annex, that's the gate, um, I missed anything? Top of my hand, Dave?
Right hand, that's all.
That's pretty much all, it sounds like, doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot of construction in a small, short amount of time. Obviously, there will be, you know, serre routing of traffic in around the installation as we, as the gates begin to go up, they'll, Fisher Avenue will remain open as it is right now, probably at least until February or March, based on the timelines we're getting now, I'm just informing you guys, you guys understand, you know, PennDOT is, we've worked very closely with PennDOT on this, so the signage will go up, there'll be digital signs on the interstate, letting folks know that they can't just shoot through, you know, Fisher Avenue anymore, but, but there'll be, you know, a lot of signage out, and we'll make sure folks know that, we'll put it on our Facebook page, and make sure that folks are.
It'll be well put out there.
Very well put out there. So, other than that, I, I can say that again, so up until 2020, when COVID hit, we were, we were averaging around a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty thousand troops through the, the Gap annually this past year, well, we were a hundred and twenty-two thousand last year, we were about a hundred and eighteen thousand this year, and, and we still were the busiest National Guard installation in the nation for, like I said, the fifth year in a row, so, and even though the numbers weren't quite as high as far as the actual, you know, hard or concrete numbers, the folks stayed longer, which in our business means more, meaning that that was still over eight hundred thousand man days, meaning that, that the folks came there and they stayed longer, and the longer they stayed is, you know, obviously the more money they spent in a PX in Lebanon County and whatever else, so it's all good for us. So, a lot, a lot of good stuff is going on there, we have a busy year planned for 2022 already, we can see it, you know, through our scheduling system, so that all looks good. I think I would be not doing due justice to all the hard work over the last two years if I didn't mention the windmill project, I know we, we speak into some folks here, you know, the Gap, I will, well, the Gap has a risk that it's facing, and we've been diligently fighting this for twenty-six and a half months.
Yes, sir.
Is that fair? I've testified multiple times at the federal, state, the county level, so has members of my litigation response team, but there's a project, this, to the northeast of Fort Indian Town Gap, if you guys are familiar with Rouse Creek, I know what we're talking about, there's a windmill project that was originally attempted in 2016 by petroleum products.
BEE.
Energy. And at that time, the Gap and the MRT and the clearinghouse were successful at, at convincing them that wasn't a good idea to do that project. Well, the, the project reemerged with a different biker here about, like I said, twenty-six months ago, and we have been working diligently with the Department of Defense Clearinghouse, with Scoobal County, with Heggins Township, and there's two or three, there's at least two or three other there.
Yeah.
That are, that are directly involved, the Zerbi Airport, for example, and where the process stands now is, cool, Scoobal County, their zoning board ruled that they would, they would not approve their portion of the project, understanding that Rouse Creek sets between three, a township and two, and two counties, right?
Yes, sir.
So Scoobal County could only block a certain portion of it. A large portion of it's in Heggins Township, it has its own zoning board, and it's hard, and the way I need to explain this is, this is right in the heart of where all of our aviators train for the Army and the PA Guard, so in the, in the, the, in the United States, there's only two of these schoolhouses in the entire continental United States, there's Watts out in Arizona, and there's Eats, the Eastern Aviation Training School, which sits right on Fort Indian Town Gap, all right, it employs about eleven hundred people, and the economic impact is somewhere around a half a billion dollars, to include all the aircraft that you see flying over your head during a state emergency, right, during natural disasters, the Chinooks, the Black Hawks, everything you see is because that schoolhouse sits right there on the installation, all right? The reason I say this is at risk is if this windmill project, which right now is at about forty-four windmills, which are over six hundred feet tall, go in into the heart of that Northeastern Aviation Training Area, then the Gap runs a risk of losing the Eastern Aviation Training School. So those jobs go away, those aircraft go away, and I hate to use that four-letter word, brack, and I might saying, I know, I don't have a crystal ball, I'm retiring, and I've got almost thirty-five, almost thirty-six years in, I don't have a crystal ball, but I also know, we all know, that money's, money speaks, it's not about what you did today, it's about what you can do for me tomorrow, and it wouldn't take but a hop, skip, and jump if we went from being able to train over a thousand students from all components, active guard, or, so that's National Guard, active Army, and international, if we went from being able to train over a thousand students a year there to nothing, or half of that, it's not gonna take the Army, or the Department of Defense, or anybody else long to figure out, well, if we're not getting our bang out of our buck there, we gotta take this party and go somewhere else. So this is important to us, it's extremely important to us, it's important to Lebanon County too, because you guys know how many, how many folks that we employ there, you know how important those aircraft are for natural disasters and state emergencies and everything else, so we're work, we've worked very hard, I know we've talked to the commissioners before at the breakfast and some other things, and Commissioner Ames, about, you know, getting a letter of support from, from, from Lebanon County to go with everything else to go to Scoobal, we're gonna provide the information that you guys need to help us do that, but I just think it's important for you guys to understand, so we're not against green energy at all. As a matter of fact, we have a solar farm on the installation that we gave up some really good prime real estate, and I say really good prime real estate, because I'm all about green energy, but I'm also, at least for the next, what, two and a half weeks as garrison commander, and every time we build something on what is green space, all right, that takes away my ability to train, test train soldiers, right, and airmen, and Navy corpsmen, and whatever else, so, but we gave up some really good real estate, and we're very proud of that, so we're all about green energy, but not at the risk of our ability to commit, to, to conduct our mission. This is, this is another version of encroachment where we're concerned, and if this project goes through, it is going to be, it, it will be devastating to aviation in Pennsylvania, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that, so, you know, don't leave here and say, well, Colonel Marshall, the old Gap commander, yeah, in two weeks, you can say whatever you want to me about me, but it won't matter, but, but seriously, all kidding aside, it's extremely important that we convince these folks to take this project and go somewhere else.
First, let's add a comment.
Sure.
Yeah, I was born in Lebanon County, so for about seventy years, I have grown up with the sound of freedom, and that includes the aircraft flying over not just the base, but my house, I see them and wave, you know, others helicopters and things, and it's a part of our life. I, I told you fellows earlier, my father came to this area from West Virginia, because he was stationed at the Gap, and met my mother, and I just say that as background for new people that come here, that we take pride in hosting the military in the county of Lebanon, and on top of that, I worked very hard with the Audubon Society and a conservation group to do a, there's papers out here, I'd love to take, to give you each a folder, but for the Kidde Tenny Ridge, and I've worked with some really good conservation groups, and I, I hope they're on board, if not, I'd like to make them aware of this, but I think it is important to preserve our flyways, both for the birds and the aviators, and as you said, we can support green energy, but we can't sacrifice our military, it's too important, not just for the security of Lebanon County, but for the security of the nation. Pennsylvania is one of the biggest guards, our men and women are called upon on a regular basis to serve this country, and we have to continue that, that's our legacy, and we also want to make sure it, it continues into the future. Without even seeing anything more, on principle, I support what you are proposing and look forward to your letter, and the only other thing that I wanted to clarify, the original plan that I saw when the gates were being installed showed Service Road, which runs parallel to Fisher Avenue, as the alternate route, is that where you will be directing traffic to?
You mean during construction?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be a route that they can get used to, so once the gates are actually installed, they'll just keep using that route? It makes perfect sense, and I was sharing that in answering questions on Facebook, et cetera, but I didn't know if there was a difference, and, and then an update I should be aware of.
And again, that'll be during construction, so eventually, when the gates are actually in, there will be no throughway through the Gap, you're gonna have to go around.
But you can go to Service Road.
I think it's cuts off down there, no?
Where it's gonna go, Commissioner, is it's gonna go down Boundary Road.
Oh, Boundary, okay.
This will be publicized.
Yes, sir, this will be, as, as these construction phases come, we're gonna get out ahead of it with the Public Affairs Office, which as a lot of you know, we have very robust social media presence, that's the way we reach the majority of residents locally, certainly with the news media, news releases, but it's going to, get it, we're, yes, it'll be a small inconvenience, but it's like I briefed the Commissioner before, we are the last Army installation in the United States, and a major, the biggest guard installation in the country, that does not have access control to it, and that was just a risk that we, we have to rectify it absolutely, and, and, you know, we're sorry that it's gonna be some getting used to, but basically, coming from the east gate, which is the Lickdale side, they'll go up Quartermaster Road to AWOL Road, AWOL Road will come over to the cemetery, right there, as I say, between the main entrance, the VA Cemetery and Funks, right there, they'll be able to get there, cross the road, go to Asher Minor, over to Bounder, Boundary, along the state parks, so there'll be no degradation of public access to the state park, and then they can make a right and get on 743 and, and on the ramp.
That was important information that people are asking, and I think if they can get their head around that, that they can still get across from east to west.
Yes, ma'am.
I think they'll be a little more.
And I misspoke, obviously, Service Road is center of massive installation, so Asher Minor and, and the, and the route that, that he explained is there, and we actually have, we have a, a, a Public Affairs release that's about to go out, that we've been working on, and it'll be on Facebook, it'll be a little bit everywhere, so we'll make sure, and again, nothing has changed as of today, we've just gotten to the beginning phases, that's why I said, as we, as the phases begin to take off, we're gonna get that information out there, and then it'll be signage out for quite a bit.
And Service Road is going to be a temporary thing.
Yeah, very temporary.
Before we, we close that.
But you're not going to get Sowers House or anything.
So the, I think, if you weigh the national security interests and protecting the assets out there, and as, as David said, this has been a long time coming, it's the last, you know, protected, so I think public inconvenience, if you will, is gonna have to be certainly trumped by the national security issues and the protection of that asset for the benefit of all, so.
And Joe Ellen, sorry, my apologies, Joe Ellen, just to let you know, as far as the Kidde Tenny Ridge goes, so, you know, we have been very successful with the Army combat, we use buffer program, the A-CUB program, in, in protecting encroachment around the installation, which is basically, you know, the ability to keep, the way it looks today, and green, is the way we want to keep it. Well, two years ago, we actually submitted the entire Gap, which is all part of the Kidde Tenny Ridge, all the way up through New Jersey, up as part of the Sentinel Landscape application that we have in, which Sentinel Landscape, you know, protects, if you're familiar with what I'm talking about, it's a federal program that protects that, so this, the Gap, the same ridge that we're talking about, is, is in part of that proposal, obviously, that's, that's at the federal level, it takes a while to get through, but we're, we're very much in, into keeping it the way that it is, keeping it green and our ability, and because like Dave always likes to say, you know, it's, we want to commit, continue to train, but we also, you know, we're not opposed to projects that folks want to do, that we can come together and join, you know, and, and as long as it doesn't negatively impact, windmills in this particular case is not something that we can support, especially there in the Northeastern Aviation Training Area.
We want to keep that second busiest teleport in the country.
Second busiest teleport, more takeoff and landings, the only, the only place that's busier is Fort Rucker, Alabama, where it's School of Aviation, so.
So thank you, and whatever we can do, as Commissioner Blitz well said.
And I really appreciate your time, and thanks for being here, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas. For your service, and certainly for your sacrifice, and that of your family for over thirty years of service to our country, and we really appreciate, and David, of course, is a longtime friend of ours here, we appreciate his service as well. So we wish you a great retirement, and.
I appreciate that.
And take care of yourself.
Merry Christmas, Joe, thanks.
Merry Christmas. Good luck at retirement, sir, we'll be talking to you. Take care.
Good luck, sir.
I wanted to make sure you didn't leave without.
Yes, ma'am.
Commander. No. Nope. We're behind. I know you're eager, because, and we're eager to have you. Yes.
Before I, I, any other public comment? Anybody? Is it good? Okay, you will now ask for the approval of the minutes of our December 16 meeting.
Seven.
We have a motion, and I'll second it, in the absence of Commissioner Ames, and any deletions, additions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so ordered. Okay, now we'll go to Sally, you in our treasurer for her report.
Okay, we had receipts on the 21st and 22nd of one million, eight hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and nine cents, brings us to a total cash of two million, two hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. We had expenditures this week of two million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and four dollars and twenty-one cents, our tax claim is five thousand, thirty-four dollars and eighty cents, so that leaves us a cash balance of eight hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents in the general fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion, any questions for Treasurer Newman? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so move.
And one other thing, an emptying the account to put the bond issue money in, you know, for going with First Citizens, I guess, charge, and signing a, I have a resolution available for that.
My, my, just that, there was an effort to shop around and find the best rate, both Treasurer Newman had done so, and Jay Wanger from Sussman Group also checked the market to see.
And I'm sorry, where is the account to go?
It's only to our First Citizens, First Citizens, yeah, First Citizens Community Bank.
And the, the best we, she could do is twenty-five basis points over the rate, which is basically the rate zero, so it's a quarter percent.
So we're not putting in equities?
No.
We, we have to keep it somewhat liquid to be able to pay the bills.
I'll make a motion to open an account with First Citizens Bank for the bond issue.
I'll second the motion. Any questions, discussion, hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so move.
I'll just need your two signatures and, and.
All of it. Next item is the adoption of our 2022 budget, Jamie has a.
Yeah, if I could just give you a, give you an update since, since the initial presentation of the budget and having it put on public display, there have been some, few tweaks to the budget, some ups and some downs, in the, in the, in relation to the overall budget, they are relatively small, however, they didn't make enough, have enough of an impact that it's worth mentioning here, unfortunately, the, the downs were greater than the ups, so a couple of things that we were able to change here for the good were some, some tweaks to health insurance, as the commissioners are aware, through our health insurance carrier, we conducted an audit of all of our subscribers to health insurance, to make certain that dependents who are on the, on the policy are, are there appropriately and legally, and are, you know, not divorcees, or not children that are, you know, over, over the age of twenty-six, and there are various, various ways that, that, that things like that could slip through, and so we required approval of all of that from employees. That ultimately resulted in some adjustments that reduced the health insurance for 2022 by. And so we required approval of all of that from employees. That ultimately resulted in some adjustments that reduced the health insurance for 2022 by seventy-nine thousand dollars. So I wanted to report that, as well as probation.
Excuse me, Jamie?
Yes.
I had seventy-two thousand, nine hundred, so it's gone up since then?
No, I have seventy-nine thousand, six hundred.
I just wanted to make sure I had the right number. Thank you.
And then in addition, Audrey was here last week, or last meeting, from Adult Probation along with John Shaw, talked about some modifications, primarily modification to the intermediate punishment grant from Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the dissolution of the Renaissance Crossroads Program. However, that gave them an opportunity in that modification to shift some of the intermediate punishment activities over to that grant and out of the general fund, resulting in a reduction of seventy-eight thousand dollars to the probation budget. The, the negative numbers, unfortunately, are that the primary care contract for the correctional facility went up as the cost of living increase was posted. It is not simply a cost of living, a cost of living metric that is used as a consumer metric. It is rather a healthcare metric, which is unfortunately higher, and that resulted in increase of three hundred and fifty thousand. So the net increase to the budget over present, presented on December second is a hundred and ninety-five thousand net. So if you wash all those things out. That, again, relative to the overall, you know, hundred and twenty-four million dollar budget is not much in the way of percentage or anything like that, but I just wanted to report it to you and give you an accurate budget to consider. With that, it has been on display now for the required twenty days by the county code. And if you're so inclined, then I would ask for adoption of Resolution Number Twelve Twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, which would establish the mileage at three point eight nine two five mils for 2022.
Three point two nine two five or eight five?
Eight nine two five.
Eight nine two five.
From two nine two five to eight nine two five, so point six mils, which is the number that was introduced.
Oh, I have the previous. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make a motion to adopt the budget for the County of Lebanon for 2022 at three point eight nine two five mils, which includes the 911 Emergency Operations Center. To me, that is a long time coming and something that I want to see completed.
At the end of the motion?
Yes.
I will second the motion. Discussion. Discussion, any ready? Just in, in this past week, a lot of work has been done, as Jamie has said, to make sure that we had the right numbers that we needed to support next year's budget. And I just want to remind everyone that about sixty percent of this budget is weighted to public safety between the prison and between the 911 center. So that and investing in our employees pretty much is, are the top three things that we have in terms of our increase. And that this is the sixth budget, five, the last five have not had a tax increase. So I just wanted to highlight those couple of things. And if there are no other questions, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
There's no other questions, but I did want to follow up if I may.
Sure.
Just hand out again, if you want to shout out to Jamie and Don whoever, these are my reasons for supporting the 911 center. I wanted to make sure that those were available. I do not take this lightly.
Okay. Is that all right? Now, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, so moved.
All right. Since we're running a little behind, it's your place, Mr. Chairman, if you want to have, use the next year for Mr. Keller.
We'll have our guests. If not.
Morning.
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 Mark, hello. Good to see you again.
If you'd like to introduce yourselves and may proceed.
Good morning. I'm Lauren Wong, Director of the Women's Chaperone Lava.
I'm Tom Keller, one of the pastors of Calvary Chapel in Lebanon.
Actually, maybe we want to do it a little differently. Would you like to give, or would you rather they?
I can, I can set a stage, maybe a little bit. I'll try.
Okay.
So on the agenda today is a request for affordable housing funds, otherwise known as Act One Thirty-Seven Funds. And these are funds that are set aside from fees that are collected for the recording of deeds that are available for affordable housing activities. And this has existed for many years now. It has been used in a variety of ways by and toward, I think, most recently, before you was community homes to be, to submit a request for the housing community on the north side, along Canal Street, I believe, at about Sixth Avenue. Is that right? Just got word, by the way, that that was funded by the state. And so you've committed five hundred thousand dollars of affordable housing funds, and it looks like that's going to be utilized now. They are here today to request from the same fund a grant, and I should perform my homework a little better here, but a grant for a project that is just up the street here on Eighth Street, entitled Door of Hope. The Housing Authority is the administrator of these funds on your behalf, so we do not, you do not maintain them here. However, all the decisions are made by the Board of Commissioners. And I don't want to get too far ahead of things, but they have reviewed this project and have submitted a letter to you recommending its funding. And you also have letters enclosed from Holly Ley, the Director of Mental Health, as well as Mayor Keller himself. Hope I didn't steal too much thunder there, Mr. Keller.
Stage has been set.
I'll let you talk about the grant and, or either the grant and the size of the project.
Great. So Door of Hope has been in existence since September two thousand and nineteen. We currently have four women living in the home, and that includes one women overseer. So we are requesting these funds for expansion, the purchase and renovation of a home at two fifty-eight South Eighth Street. And that would allow us to house nine women who are on permanent disability, most suffering with pretty serious mental health issues. These women, as you know, are pretty high risk in the community. There is no all-women or women-only group home or any home of this sort in Lebanon County. So this would be a pretty unique project and is and has been. So this is already a successful running model. We know that it works. It has been successfully working for the last two years. And so the request is to purchase and expand the project. So that is what we are looking for. If you have any questions, they'll be happy to.
Mr. Keller?
Builders.
She's the, she's the mouthpiece of this one. Very good.
Did you mention the amount of your grant request?
It is exactly two hundred and ninety thousand, sixty dollars and ninety-two cents.
So they presented a very detailed budget with all the, I think, down to the capital hardware.
Everything, yeah.
Very good. Well, we also want to entertain a motion to approve this project.
I'll make a motion to approve two hundred ninety-eight thousand, sixty dollars and ninety-two cents in a grant to Calvary Chapel to purchase two fifty-eight South Eighth Street in Lebanon for the purposes of expanding a successful women's program to help those with homelessness, mental health issues, et cetera, get back on track.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Any questions? Going once. Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so ordered. You have your funding and please, thank you for all your investment in our.
Thank you.
In this area of our community.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
All right.
The anticipation has been building.
Oh, yeah. All right. Just riveting stuff.
Good morning. I'm Ed Lee, London County Controller, Secretary of the Board, Retirement Board. I'm here for the purpose of conducting business for the annual retirement board meeting. The first order of business is motion to approve the minutes of the January seventh, twenty-twenty-one, February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, May twentieth, twenty-one, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, October seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and November seventeenth, twenty-one, retirement board minutes, which are included in the packet.
So moved. Second.
It's been, I'm sorry. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the retirement board for the year. Any questions or comments? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Second motion is a motion to approve the interest rate payable to the, for the retirees for the money that the employees, they put into retirement fund. The rate for twenty-twenty-one was four point five, and I will make a motion that we keep the rate at four point five percent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we set the rate, or continue the rate at four point five percent. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved.
Next motion was to approve the class for retirement in twenty-twenty-two. The class for twenty-twenty-one is one eightieth class. Just by way of information, if we change the class from the one eightieth class to any other class, it would go from seven percent mandatory to nine percent mandatory. So I move that we keep it at one eightieth, so we can keep it at the seven percent.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we keep the number at the hundred and eighty percent. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved.
Next motion would be to have Corin Ferry prepare the Green Bar pension statements that we get every year for the year of twenty-twenty-two at the cost of a dollar eighty-five per state.
Say that again, one?
One dollar eighty-five cents.
Is that the same?
It's been the same for, we've negotiated that for like ten years. Everybody else is going on, but we've been able to keep it at one eighty-five. So I'll move it over to that.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved.
The next order of business is, according to the change in the Pension Act, we must at least discuss the cost of living once every three years, once we get eighty percent funded. As you could, as included in the packet was the cost of what it would be if we awarded a COLA for twenty-twenty-two to retirees. That cost would be four point four million, ninety-five thousand, ninety-five thousand and eighty dollars, or a payable, and it would be funded over four years. The cost of one point two million added on to the annual defined contribution. And if we do it that way, it would cost five million versus four. And just by way of information, the four years would be under the current GASB rules, but by the end of that four-year term, the government accounting standard boards is changing their way of accounting to say if we were to award a COLA in any year, that all that would be payable in the year we award it. So in this case, if that would be an act now, we would award a COLA, and it would have been a separate four million dollar distribution. I recommend that in light of our budget situation and recent taxes, we are not in position to award a COLA issue.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we do not grant the COLA, and for the reasons that have been presented. And any comments or discussion regarding the motion? Just glad to remind everybody, we've been very diligent about the ARC and currently funding that, and so.
That would have, actually, had we approved this, it would have made next year's ARC instead of three million, it would have been four point two, which would have had a notable point two in the budget.
Yes. So, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved.
Next motion would be to approve the refunds paid to former employees in twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the refunds to employees, former employees.
Second. Okay. It's removed and seconded. Any comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved.
The next motion would be to acknowledge the death benefits of members who passed away in twenty-twenty-one and the death benefits paid in twenty-twenty-one.
So, second.
It's removed and seconded that we approved the death benefits paid in twenty-twenty-one. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved.
The next motion would be to approve the pensions of employees who retired in twenty-twenty-one as presented in the packet.
So moved. I'll second it.
There's a motion to approve, to approve the pensions that were approved in twenty-twenty-one. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved.
And unless there's further business, then it's motion to retire the.
Anything else to come before the, sorry, or the retirement board? Not me, is it? Thank you.
Two more things remain. One is request for exemptions for real estate taxes from qualified disabled members. This is listed in the packet. Jean Pierre Santos of Woods Lane, New East Town. Ernest Deaton, Seventh Avenue, Lebanon. Clyde Carr, Elizabeth Avenue, Lebanon. Gus Rayer, Lancaster Street, Jostown. Justin Blyer, Suzanne Drive, Lebanon. Brian Patton, Margaret Lane, Polar.
I'll make a motion to approve the six veterans for real estate tax exemption for their one hundred percent disability from the service to our country.
I'll second the motion. Questions, comments? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved.
Last item, last item I have is for the reappointment of members of the Lebanon Destination Marketing Organization Board, otherwise known as Tourism Board. All three of these individuals are seeking another term, which would end December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. They are Michael Emery, who sits on behalf of former Iron Trenist, Josie Ames, and Carrie Boyer.
I'll make a motion to approve the three named members of the DMO Board.
I'll second the motion. Questions, comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, so moved. Do you have, just specifically, is that?
You did.
That's been done, okay.
Yep. That was your last motion.
Okay. All right. Anything else from the floor? Not we, want to wish everyone a very, Merry Christmas, and also for you and yours that if there's any sickness in your family or any hardships that you have somebody during this holiday season. Amen.
May I add my, as well, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas. It's been a very difficult year, and we all know the problems that we're facing. The budget here, but I'm talking health-wise, are so many people filling the hospitals. And again, I respectfully ask everyone to consider. asked everyone to consider the vaccine. It's, it's just one way we can help our healthcare workers. They are exhausted. We cannot let this continue without doing our part. Thank you for listening.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You stand adjourned. Thank you all.